Workshop order.
Wander. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished on news media in person, requesting notification.
Thank you. The Bailey Park PDD workshop. Call to a for the special council meeting, beginning at conclusion of workshop. Then the effect of that. So we're going to move right into the workshop. Mr. Fulgham?
Madam Chair, I would lean upon Ms. Wagner to give you a brief overview of the proposal. This proposal's been to the Planning Commission, received a favorable recommendation. It came to you at your last meeting, just as a reminder, and the council thought better of having a workshop before proceeding with the project. So I'll ask Ms. Wagner to just give you a rundown on the project.
Good evening, Madam Chair and council members. The applicant has requested a planned development district zone designation for two parcels of land consisting of a total of 26.63 acres located along Highway 170 approximately two miles east of the intersection of Highway 462. And the property also fronts on Old Bailey Road. Currently, the property is zoned community commercial and residential and is undeveloped. The concept plan illustrates the general layout, the arrangement of land uses and access points. That's the concept plan on the overhead monitors. The PDD proposes one full access on Highway 170 and one on Old Bailey Road. Land uses are comprised of mixed use commercial, community commercial, multifamily residential, and single-family residential, both attached and detached. A maximum density for the commercial tract will not exceed 65,280 square feet, which is 12,000 square feet per acre based on the Uplands. A maximum density for the residential tract is 233 units, which is 12 units per acre based on the Uplands. Setbacks and buffers, there would be a 50-foot buffer along Highway 170 and a 15-foot setback is proposed for commercial use that is adjacent to residential use and not separated by road. A detached, single-family residential and duplexes will require six feet side yard setbacks, 15 feet rear yard setbacks, and 25 feet front yard setbacks for lots with front-loaded garages, and 15 feet yard setbacks for lots with side-loaded garages. Attached, single-family residential townhomes condominiums will require six feet side yard setbacks from non-common property lines. The perimeter buffer will be 10 feet for single-family residential and townhomes and all other areas will be a 20-foot perimeter buffer. 10% of open space will be required, and landscaping standards will meet or exceed the county's requirements. Just to show you this concept map, this area along the front, this is Highway 170. This is the commercial area, it's zoned community commercial, and then the rear portion is residential. This is Old Bailey Loop Road, so it has an entrance down here and an entrance here. As far as traffic and access, one of the properties is accessed by North Liberty Highway 170, which is a four-lane state-maintained highway classified as an arterial road. The other one is Old Bailey Road, it's a two-lane state-maintained road classified as a local road. A traffic impact study analysis was prepared by AECON, and a Phase 1 environmental site assessment was prepared by GHD. Both reports were included with your staff report at the last county council meeting. And we have not set up the public hearing yet for county council, but that will be done, and everybody within 500 feet will be notified, signs placed on the property. But we did do that for Planning Commission. So the applicant is here, Jen Toski, and Mr. Dan Kiefer with Whitmer Jones and Kiefer. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know they'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Wagner, the Planning Commission approved it without any caveats. They were fine with the way the project was planned and proposed. Was there any reservations or anything that we should know about?
They did have a few concerns. But as you may or may not be aware, it goes back to Planning Commission for master plan approval, so they get to look at the traffic again, the environmental impacts. So they were concerned by a public comment that was raised about environmental impacts, possibly of what was raised in one of the public comments was like an Indian artifacts or historical area nearby.
Maybe that's at least a mile away or close to a mile away from where that is.
And then again. They know that they would get to see the traffic impact again at master plan and hopefully get a little bit deeper into that.
Any communication with the subdivision, I guess to the east of them, I know that that's pretty close.
So at the bottom here, well, no, we've not received any comments from them. There is a house here on Old Bailey Road that's right here adjacent to the property where the cursor is. I know Dr. Butler raised in the Planning Commission meeting, like if that property could be buffered. Well, because that was a comment that we received from that property owner, she was concerned about buffering.
Some landscaping type berms.
Landscaping, fencing berms. She just wanted to, she feels like she lives in a rural area and doesn't want to lose that feel to a busy community possibly.
So it's fine with the development of it, she just wanted to make sure she had an adequate buffer.
I don't, I don't want to use the word fine, because I don't want to misrepresent her. But at the Planning Commission meeting, can I read you her letter real quick? And you'll hear from her at public hearing, I know you will.
You can email it to us then.
Okay. Sure. So I think she had a few concerns. She raised up some drainage and issues and traffic and the buffering mainly.
Madam Chair. Ms. Wagner, based on your reporting, are you saying to us that the Planning Commission has not made a final commitment at this time?
So as you do know, the Planning Commission's a recommended body, so they did look at it, and they have recommended it to county council with a favorable recommendation. When they're ready, if everything were approved, when they're ready to do a master plan, it goes back to the Planning Commission. And as you know, this is your concept plan, it doesn't have a lot of detail. But during the master plan, there will be more detail, especially as to how the internal roads would be laid out. There will be more engineering done, although it's not ready for development plan approval, so it's not full engineering, but it will have some more engineering done to know a little bit more about how much land they're going to need for a stormwater and different things, how much buffer. And they'll get to look at the traffic impact again.
So you're saying that they will get an opportunity to make a final commitment before we...
They are the group of body for the master plan. So if you approve it for a planned development district, then it goes back for a master plan. Probably, it usually doesn't come right back for a master plan, it takes some time. And then after master plan, it's a development plan approval.
But they'll not see it?
You will not see it yet, no sir.
To make that clear, Dr. Branley, is you are considering approving the change in the zoning designation. And once you do that, the rest of it is handled by staff and Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Good thanks. In the program that they presented was, they said there may be an extra exit and entrance into Bailey Road. But if you look at the proposal, there's already an exit on Bailey Road, is there going to be another one on the other side? Where are they going, are they going to put it there? Is that where they're going to put it?
So at Planning Commission level, that was mentioned, and I think they said they could look at it. So I don't think that that's been completely determined.
Well, the Planning Commission didn't say it. They said that they were, they were under the thought that the South Carolina DOT would maybe require.
And I think they talked about it being emergency access, but it's not shown here, and I don't know that that's...
I mean, is available to do, that's all I'm asking. Is that where we'd be right there or close to each other? You have another, if you look at the design here, on the right, they had a road going out to Bailey Road. Would it be on the left one also?
It's possible, I don't...
I'm just asking.
It's possible, I don't think it's decided, yeah.
As a 50-foot buffer. Does that take in, why is it 50-foot?
Highway 170 is a highway corridor overlay district, so our ordinance requires a 50-foot vegetative buffer along Highway 170.
Now with that taken, what happens if they expand 170? Does that, does that take away the buffer?
Yes, essentially it would if DOT were to condemn that to take it away, yes.
So wouldn't we be able, maybe 75-foot buffer to take that to effect? I'm just asking again.
You could certainly ask for that.
Okay. Water problem. In your meeting, they talked about a pond or something that was causing water now and overflowing into the river. What river is that? Does anybody know? If anybody's flooding to the river, would this exacerbate, or would we have to check on that?
That would be addressed not only by Jasper County, but also by South Carolina DHEC at development plan approval. DHEC issues stormwater permits, and you cannot cause any negative impact on any adjacent parcel upstream or downstream.
Would that affect, would that affect, once you did this, would that affect it anyway? I mean, be existing?
What the engineer said was that they would plan all of the stormwater retention that they need to plan for here. They'll be required to retain that stormwater on site for 24 hours or more before it can slowly begin to be released.
And when you said you'd notify people, did you notify Beaufort? The Beaufort people?
We have notified Beaufort County, yes.
But not Beaufort people that did it? Or 15, yeah, because he...
I haven't, but many, most of the public hearing, most of the notices, which we only received five, but I think only one of them were in Jasper, they're all from Beaufort, they saw the sign. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe the young lady that lives right next door is related to some of those across the street on the Beaufort County side.
They're all aware of it.
I understand, I understand, but just, yeah. There's always, you always propose that loophole, that they say, we need to be notified, that's all. I just asked. And on the Indian Berry Mountains, now, this is within a mile, but there's a, all that, that land going out to the river is wetlands. So this is not wetlands, this is higher than that. Now, that's related with Berry Mountains. I just think that we should be more cautious. They did a study on it, but that's only if somebody noticed it and was something right. It could be still there. And when we did Chelsea South, they actually went in there and tried to do an excavation. I think that has to be, because we can't lose this.
Yes, sir. And because we are a coastal county, as part of the DHEC permitting, when they apply for the coastal consistencies, all of that does have to be checked, which it was checked with this as far as the historical, the state historical preservation office.
But when's it checked? It's only checked when they go up there and they say, they look through the archives, like, does anybody ever notice this? Doesn't mean that it's not there.
That's true. They hired a consultant who walked the land, so I mean, I guess he really should speak to that.
Okay. Just to go on, and... When Jasper water, first of all, we didn't have it at the last meeting, it was a Jasper water letter coming out. And it wasn't really, they said, yeah, we can do it, but you've got to tell us what it is first before we accept it. I mean, it's not, they didn't accept, as the, they said, they said, the letter said, we will, we can do it, but we have to have the engineering by the developer before we can tell them yes.
Well, that's true. You have, that was even a commercial project or any subdivision, you have to submit plans to Beaufort Jasper, and they approve it, and they have some of their own requirements before they'll really sign off on it.
And this is presently zoned as?
The very front piece that's in orange is community commercial, and the yellow area is residential.
Residential.
Yes.
Right now?
Yes, currently.
So what are they asking for?
A planned development district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, Ms. Wagner, if we rezone the commercial portion of the front to general commercial, what, could we ask Ms. Toski and Mr. Kiefer to kind of give us an idea of what their commercial plans are along Highway 170, that parcel?
I think that's fine. Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, council for having us. Mr. Salz, to your question, if, when we initially acquired this property, our plan was not to go for a PDD. It was zoned community commercial, it is zoned community commercial and residential, which met our needs. Our intent was to develop the front part with office retail space, basically class A office space, some medical buildings, things like that. And we were going to take the residential tract and either go with a mobile home community or possibly look at townhomes, both for rent products, which are both by right under the current zoning. I called Ms. Wagner and inquired about subdividing the residential piece for the purpose of possibly selling the townhomes. And that's when Ms. Wagner educated me as to the whole PDD process, and she said that if you have a piece of property that's 25 acres or more, and you're wanting to do something like this, it may be more beneficial for you to seek a PDD. Beneficial to us as the developers, the neighbors, the county. So I kind of pulled back my plans and started looking at the PDD and what it could do and how we could work within it. We stopped all development and conceptual planning at that stage, because until we know whether or not we have a PDD zoning, there's no need for us to plan any further. And here we are today. So we went before the Planning Commission, Planning Commission gave a heads up, thumbs up for it, and we wanted to come before you to ask for that rezon as well. Another driving force behind us wanting the PDD had a lot to do with the neighbor who has asked for the buffer. She contacted me, and the very first thing she asked me, she said, are you going to do a trailer park? And I said, well, we really don't know. I said, without a PDD amendment, zoning math amendment, I really am limited in what I can do on the residential portion. I'm limited to certain things. And I said, I'll do my best, but I'm going to have to go through that PDD process. So again, we kind of backed up, and I got with Mr. Kiefer, and we started looking at some kind of conceptual bubble plans as to what would work. The densities are actually very comparable between a PDD zone and what it's currently zoned. The main difference that I can see with a PDD zone is that it allows us to subdivide and then sell the residential portion in a fee simple, as opposed to being limited to just a for-rent product. So I thought from my perspective that the PDD might actually be more of what the neighbors and the county would want to see there. And Ms. Wagner has answered many questions, many emails, I've annoyed her from time to time as to what I'm asking for. But until we know whether or not we can move forward under a PDD designation, our ability to design and finish engineering and go to master subdivision approval, all of those things are contingent on whether or not you guys say, okay, we can do this as a PDD. So I don't want to be, I don't mean to sound vague, I just kind of don't have any really specific design answers for you at this time. I did bring Dan Kiefer with me, who is my land planner, and he could speak to like buffers and things of that nature. But when we sat down and we started comparing apples to apples, we realized for us as a developer, we're good either way, whether we keep it the way it is or whether we go PDD. I just think that it has some advantages for the county and the neighbors if we are developing this under the guidelines and the development standards of the PDD. But I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Madam Chair, Ms. Toski, the guidelines for the PDD requires you as a developer to have higher standards and more than just, I guess, as you said, a mobile home park. It gives you a better product, a nicer product, and more appealing as far as the aesthetics of the development that PDD gives you, a little bit better guidelines and something that the council would prefer to see versus the mobile home park.
Hands down, the development guidelines under your PDD standards are stringent, more stringent than what would be allowed with the by-right zoning as it is today. And we're used to working with the PDDs that, I grew up in Richland, but I live over in Beaufort County, and we are builder-developers, and we do a lot of stuff in Beaufort County. So we were, actually, we felt more comfortable working within the boundaries of what the PDD guidelines had. But again, as far as densities and aesthetics and management of fees for the county and the neighbors, having something that has possibly more retail value on the back end, helps maintain property values, 100% of the PDD is where we would need to go. And if we got that rezon designation, then Mr. Kiefer and I could sit down and kind of zero in on a land plan that can, you know, that can go back for master or major subdivision approval at that point, and check off every one of the boxes that's required by the Planning Commission and the county at that point.
Are you saying to us that you have the primary desire at this point, or primary interest at this point?
For what? To develop it?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir, I do. I most certainly do have a primary interest to develop it.
So what specifically would you say that is?
I would really like to do some form of a townhome community that is fee simple, that I could sell and have, and the purchasers have homeownership rather than just renting. Under the current zone, I could not subdivide that back 19-acre parcel. I also think that there's an advantage in the PDD with regard to ingress and egress to this property. As it stands right now, the front parcel, which is zoned community commercial, is accessed by 170. The lower parcel, 2B, is accessed only by Bailey's Road. So if I were to step out and develop them as they stand today, I would be limited to access the residential portion off of Bailey Road only. There's no cross-easement into the commercial to allow my traffic to get out to 170. So by bringing both properties under a PDD designation, I think it alleviates some of the traffic congestion concerns that the Bailey Road residents may have, because it opens up a big pass-through for anyone coming off of 170 into the residential. They don't have to go around and access the residential from the Bailey Road side. They can turn in through the commercial on the spine road and go straight back to their residence. So there are some advantages to doing it this way, but I most definitely have an interest in developing it. And I, this was not a parcel that, you know, we plucked out of thin air. This piece has some history to it, and I'm not sure if the council's aware of it, but in 2006, Bailey's, I'm going to say this wrong, Bailey's Loop LLC acquired three individual parcels, and they had those three individual parcels replatted and recorded as the two pieces you see today. They had every intention, Bailey's Loop, of developing this as a residential and commercial development. And in or around 2007, April of 2007, the zoning was adopted, and sometime between 2007 and 2010, Bailey's Loop lost control of the property, and South Carolina Bacon Trust took the property back. SCBNT advertised the property for sale from 2011 to 2016. There were no takers, no one bought it. Mr. Waston, Billy Waston out of Georgia, picked up the property in 2016 and closed on it for pities on the dollar. I was actually in the process of selling another parcel of land that we controlled in Beaufort County, and this owner contacted me and asked me if I'd do a mobile home park, excuse me, RV park on his property. And I said, no, I'm too busy. And he said, well, take a look at it and tell me what you think. And as I started looking into it, I realized, okay, this was something that someone else had kind of started going down this path before. And I just kind of picked up the ball where they left off, thinking it is a good piece of property. It can, it can certainly provide housing in a price point that's much needed in that area. The Planning Commission did ask me on several occasions if I would please consider affordable housing as a component to this. And I was very frightened. And I was very frank with them, I said, "I don't know a lot about affordable housing, but I'll educate myself." So I began looking at the affordable housing option, and it's definitely a possibility. Um, you know, being from Richland, I know the, the struggle that a lot of people in this community have with being able to afford a, a nice place to live. So we, we've kind of started looking at maybe bringing in some small aspect of that as well, which I do believe the PDD will allow for that. And went through, we've started a development agreement, I think my attorney has been in touch with Mr., with Mr. Tatter, um, and we've got a draft development agreement out for, and they're going back and forth right now. So I do believe that by bringing it into a PDD, it makes my job as a developer a lot easier. It, I have guidelines, I have boundaries, um, and I can move forward in that aspect. But if the PDD is not an option, we are currently zoned for something that will work for us as well. Uh, you know, being from here, I wanted to back up and just make sure that we had, that we're doing what is, is best for the property, the neighbors, the county, and me as a developer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for us?
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, it's time. You want to call for a motion to adjourn?
Shall move, Madam Chair, second.
It's been properly moved in second, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.